Good evening. Called the selectmen. The school committee meeting of Monday, July 18th to order and welcome to Oxford High School Community Room. Tonight on our agenda, we do have Mr. Bronies back in this evening to speak about the school improvement plan, as well as Commander Maisley and our NGROTC group will be in talking about an upcoming trip and then we'll talk a little bit about a contract and a budget and we have a few requests from the community members and hopefully we'll try to keep it on the shorter side for the heat this evening. So I think matters a little bit out of order. The commander's here with some students, so we'll let you guys go first tonight. So Commander Maisley?
Thank you. Members of the school committee, it's my privilege come tonight not only to talk about a trip and ask your blessings to start investigations on it, but for the last eight or nine years, I've been the coordinator for both girls state and boys state for the high school, trying to get quotas and also deeply involved with the Navy's Leadership Academy, which is the, it's the largest and the longest leadership training camp for the Navy in the United States that's run down Newport. I used to play in that until I had a leg injury. I used to do sailing and run sailing director and last couple of years I've been kind of sidelined, but helped behind the scenes there. This year, what I'd like to do first is introduce three of the five members that I was able to get tuition free to go to girls state and boys state this year. The tuition for boys state and girls state, first off, it's run by the American Legion. It's over seventy-five years old. This year, they combined both girls state and boys state and they held it out at Stonehill College out in Easton, Mass, following up on what, an attempt they tried to coordinate and combine it all in one site for the sake of good speakers and everything else. And due to generosity of many people in town, such as the American Legion Post 58 Women's Auxiliary, they covered two tuitions. The tuitions for girls states are $300 for the week for a seven-day camp. They covered for two girls to go and I worked with our administration, particularly Mr. Nugent and Mr. Wells, and we came up with a list of possible candidates and we picked what we thought were the best three to act as ambassadors for the high school. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce two of our three ladies that attended and one of our two boys that attended. So Zach, get a chair and come over here. Our two ladies, Zach went as one, excuse me, Zach went as one of the two boys, Mike Elliott was the second. Lisa Duchiani, who's your class, our class president, attended, as well as Cindy Voe and in absentia, Vanessa White. All five members got their tuition free. When NGROTC went up on Saturday, June 9th to do a color guard opening appearance for the American Legion Convention, that appearance again allowed us to request from the American Legion Foundation, Auxiliary Foundation, two free quotas to go to boys state, girls state, and they normally reserve for cadets. This year, we were so strapped in so many areas, particularly at Leadership Academy, I took the one quota that was allowed for the JROTC and JROTC here in Oxford paid for Mike Elliott to go. The American Legion Foundation covered Zach to go. The two girls here, we're still trying to figure out who's covered, but the auxiliary covered one, the auxiliary foundation covered one tuition, and the local American Legion Auxiliary, the few ladies that remain in that organization, decided to take among themselves, chipped in, and they covered the $600 for the two girls to go. So I'm a boys stateer myself from many years ago, I won't say how many, both as a counselor for a couple of years representing the academy and attending in Connecticut. I've worked closely with these folks. I would open the floor to, with your permission, let the kids talk about what they did, what they learned, and if you have any questions, fire away.
Yep. All right. So can I start?
Yeah, you can.
All right. So boys state was probably one of the best experiences that I've had so far throughout high school because we learned so much that isn't offered anywhere in school really. Like, I mean, I took a class on economics, they were both in it.
Yeah.
It was pretty cool.
It was good.
And it was so cool because it was like this whole mock state, like the entire thing was like voting for our senator and our governor and everything, like, I don't know.
Cindy, you can continue.
Okay. Cindy, you can continue.
All right.
Don't be shy.
Oh, okay. Yay. Um, well, I was really honored to be kind of nominated to actually go to something like this because when Commander Maisley first presented it to me, I was like, oh my gosh, what is this? No. And then, but, um, as like days went on and it was getting closer to going to it though, it was actually, it was like nerve wracking, but yet fun because I knew like, like people from Oxford High School would be there, so like, it was kind of nice, but, um, I knew we wouldn't be there together all the time, so it was just a new experience. But when we got there, I think the thing that I really liked the most was that everyone was there and they were all put into like a new predicament. They didn't know what was going on and they were just all in the same kind of like little thing. They were just like, they were just, they didn't know what was going on, so we all really connected on that level, so that there was like really nothing for us, like, you know, all walls were kind of be, you know, oh, they were gone because we were like, we need to make friends. And so we all really bonded, like I made some really close friends there. Plus, like, it really helped me get out of my shell just a little bit, just a little bit. It, it helped, it really, really helped. And plus, economics was very, it was like something new, like, I always thought about going into like business, something like that, like, and it kind of like gave me experience of knowing what college life would be like, what college classes, courses and stuff would be like. And just being around the whole campus environment was a new thing and so it was fun.
I definitely agree about the college campus. It was really interesting and it was cool to kind of get put into the college life for a week. And it was definitely yanked me out of my comfort zone very quickly, getting there, not knowing anyone and put in a dorm with a girl I don't know who showed up a day late, so I actually had no roommate and I was really awkward for the whole like first day. But, um, I don't know, it was really, it was definitely a new experience and I, I, it definitely like changed my whole look on like government and stuff and it opened my eyes to really how difficult it is. Like, we all ran for decisions, I think we all got them. Like, I got city clerk.
I got, um, the committee.
School committee.
No, 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 the city council.
City council.
I was on the school committee, so.
Mike got selectman and Vanessa got mayor of her town, so.
Yeah. All five, all five kids got elected, so.
Yeah, so it was like, it was really eye-opening to the whole process of getting elected and all that stuff. And it was a real honor to go and it was definitely like life-changing and I would definitely go back. I'm gonna go back and be a counselor next year, that's for sure.
And the board. Just tell us where it was held? What school?
Stonehill.
At Stonehill College.
Yeah.
We thank you again for coming in, thank you for sharing your experiences and getting out of that comfort zone. You're welcome back here anytime.
Thank you.
The feedback that I have from both the girls state director and the boys state director were that our kids really stood out. You should know that. They, they knew them by name. Tom Crowley's the fund director of the Legion Foundation and he came back and gave me direct feedback on Mike and Zach right away at the end of the week. And we were all texting each other, trying to keep info going between here and my bungee cord schedule between here and Newport for a whole bunch of other activities prior to Leadership Academy, so. Now, last Friday, you probably all got the invitations late by email, but I got my house wired and we finally got Cox to fix the internet and graduation for the Navy's Leadership Academy was last week, Friday, Friday the 13th. There were about 145 students, the best top two or three from each school of the 54 in what is Area 4, which is the northeast United States and Europe. There were over 28 instructors gave up their time to come down and run both an academic side of the house, a military side of the house, a drill side of the house, and then sailing, which is what I used to play with. Tonight, two of our three graduates who were there last week came in and I'm asking them to do the same thing, just introduce you to them, know who they are. The distinguishing factors of this Leadership Academy is it's the only one in the United States that's two weeks long. It's not on a schedule like get up at 7:30 or, or 8 o'clock like boys state, they're up at 5:00 AM and it's round the clock with classes, constant team leadership development. This year, they expanded the academics from 16 to 22 courses. They actually folded in some STEM engineering drills and had the kids build some bridges?
Yes.
Build some bridges. Sailing continued on and smack in the middle of all that, on the day we started it, the America's Cups were going, so the kids got to see some of the America's Cups' last races around Fort Adams, which was pretty spectacular. And I got to see some of it, I was down there earlier with the sailing crew because I certified the instructors. And then the last weekend, the kids are given one day to go out in town on a trip and basically they visited Fort Adams, they had a reenactor's team set up, lots of activities. Went out to Breton Point, Walk Cliff Walk Manor out by Sullivan Virginia University, went down to Eastons Beach, and then they were released downtown. And downtown last weekend, over 250,000 people a day came into Newport because 15 tall ships were there. And on Monday, they had the parade of sail, which was pretty spectacular. So while the kids are actually training sailing, 15 massive tall ships are out there and they're right in the same vicinity as the whole parade. And while they're there, there were a bunch of us up at the house trying to get ready for reception and getting ready. We got to see it, so a lot of cadets got to see that as well. And I'd like to introduce two of our three graduates. Andy Kalanowski is not here, he's our new executive officer. He could not get out of a work commitment tonight, but he passed his regrets, otherwise he would be here. Behind me are our new CO, Dylan Burdo, is gonna be a junior this coming fall. And we kind of got waivers from the Navy and broke this, broke the rules, they don't normally want to see freshmen coming in, but I can tell you this, that every freshman that has gone from Oxford that we have picked, none have ever dropped out, none have ever been sent home. So when a quota opened up with a couple of injuries or some cancellations, we managed to get Jacob Goyette in here. Jake just got elected as a freshman as the vice president of student council, if you recall. So, Zach's right hand. Without further ado, I'd ask you two gentlemen, come up and go ahead and give them the papers if you get the spares.
Thanks.
Do you want me to? You get spares?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, give two up there.
This is just a paper, there's an article on the second page, it says it goes around.
That's a quick representation. I grabbed it Saturday when I saw it, it's the base paper and it's got a little bit about tall ships, got a whole article about Leadership Academy in there. So you can get a little bit visual in there before we get our press releases and all our stuff out, once I figure out how to transfer pictures. I'm not that proficient at that yet.
Okay. Well, we got there on July 1st and I had no clue what I was going to expect. I, I was, in my mind, I was thinking, oh, is it gonna be like the basic leadership training? Am I gonna be beaten up every day? And it was not at all. It was prob, it was the greatest experience I've ever experienced in my life. There were certain points where I felt like I just wanted to go and, go to bed and just sleep for 10 days, but it was, it was great. The leadership classes taught me so many things. They were, I believe, 45 minutes for two and you had one, two in the morning and two in the afternoon. And during that, you'd have your sailing. You start off with a ground school, you take your test on Thursday and I passed, Dylan passed, and we did great and I, I love sailing as well, so, but it taught me a lot of things, how to be humble, how to work together as a team, because, I mean, teamwork was essential with a lot of the, um, the courses we took, especially the orienteering. And, um, but I enjoyed it so much and I guess you can go on Dylan and explain how you.
Well, going off what his, what he said, we got, when we woke up in the morning, like what commander said, we woke up, they woke us up at like 5:00 in the morning, they run, they were gonna us down to the auto, the gymnasium where we had 15 minutes of workouts and then we ran for like a mile and a half every single day. So that woke you up right away and then right after that, you go have chow for breakfast and then they'll either have you go to academics and if you had academics the last couple of days, it was really hot, so it was just like being in class again, it was just like being in school again, it was wicked hot and you're just like, but if you, if you stuck through it, you learned a lot about everything, about leadership and time management, that was a huge thing, was time management and keeping a schedule of everything. And then the sailing aspect of it was probably one of the greatest things ever. Not only was it extremely fun, but if I may quote one of the instructors there, "It's the perfect cockpit for leadership," was what he said. And because you have to look for what's gonna happen next, you have to figure out, all right, that's coming up, I have to prepare for that. You have to delegate that your, you have to tell people who, who has to do what if you're the skipper. You have to figure out on the spot what needs to happen, what needs to change, and it was just an amazing experience and it was like, it was probably what he said, it was the greatest experience I've ever had in my entire life.
Yep.
It was definitely.
I miss it. I miss it dearly.
I miss it already, it's been the past couple of days, I already miss it.
I will agree though, the last couple of days since graduation, I've been quite lazy, just trying to mellow down, but tomorrow, I'm getting right back on my running regimen in the morning because that, I definitely dropped a few pounds when I was there. I'll be to make.
They had a very, very strict room inspection and that taught, taught us a lot about attention to detail and you might not think something's there, but then when they take something off and you go back in your room, oh, that little thing is gonna be a big cause to something else, so I have to fix that. And then our first uniform inspection, they had a gunnery sergeant and they're trained to find the smallest little thing that's wrong and fix it. So that was definitely an eye-opener. And then what commander said, the stem was just, it was outstanding. We had to figure out a way to make a bridge out of straws and masking tape, just straws and masking tape, and we had to figure out a way to make a bridge that held at least four textbooks. And it was just, it was, it was difficult, but it taught us a lot about teamwork and just working together and as well as, I know boys state and girls state, they got a lot, they got along a lot, very well with their roommates and everything. But I think like us too, our you, our platoons were just so close. Like the first day you got there, you're like, oh, I'm not really gonna get that close, it's only two weeks, whatever. But the last day, it was just like, I'm never gonna see these people again and you made some of the greatest friends I'll ever have in my entire life. I became such good friends with my entire platoon and that day that we all got off on liberty, almost the entire platoon just kind of sticked together because we were all already such close friends and it was just like, now we, we can still connect with them on Facebook and we can text, we text with them and everything, but it's just like, you're not with them anymore and you miss them already, it's been a couple of days.
And again, being with the, the different kids from all over the, you know, Area 4, it shows, it showed me how different each unit is run and there's certain ways that we can help them improve their unit and vice versa. Many different ways they run it, you know, and I enjoyed it a lot. I mean, my roommate was from Boyertown, Pennsylvania and he was their executive officer and he had a lot of great ideas for me and I definitely kept that in my head. I wrote a few, some, some of them down and I'm still keeping contact with every one of those kids.
And Jacob's wearing his shirt, I forgot to wear my shirt. We all made signed shirts because we became such good friends, so we all signed our platoon shirts and, you know, wrote little hidden mess, like messages and jokes and stuff that we made in our, in the two weeks that we were there. It was just, it was so fun. And my roommate was, um, he was from New Jersey, from the Marine Academy of Science and Technology. I mean, their school's got so much more money than our school, it's just that's how it is. But like he gave me so many ideas on what new things to do and just how different our school is compared to their school and our unit is to their unit and it's just, it's amazing how diverse all the units are.
Can you tell us what's next?
One other note from Leadership Academy. Master Chief Youngsmann went for his first time in a position, it used to be called Drill Instructor, but he went as the Platoon Instructor. That's his title now. And it's kind of changed in how it does things. What I'm pleased to report to the committee is that all four instructors were in their rookie year and amongst the four, in his inaugural year, his platoon took top honors at the academy. So it was kind of difficult to get him at the house, kind of floating around and feeling really good, but Oxford made another stand, you know, with, in terms of how they pushed the kids and held standards and enforced them and the way he motivated his crew. And you could, you could see it definitely on the field. Mrs. Gosher came to the graduation and those kids were just absolutely pumped all day during the graduation. On a note, because they completed the two weeks, they all get a distinguishing silver cord they're authorized to wear from here on out. Also, the graduates, at least within Area 4 with 9,000 kids enrolled, these kids are now in a very elite grouping. Their graduation puts them in the top eight tenths of the top 1% of all cadets in the United States by graduating from that Leadership Academy. So we have three, three new ones, which is good because for the first time in our history, since we had the end of the, end of year banquet and Danielle got relieved, we didn't have any cord wearers for a couple of weeks, but that's okay, we're on our way back, so. And we had a reception attended by close to 35 or 36 people afterwards at my house. Great time and lots of support for the kids, that's the big, that's the big, big thing, Two things that I would like to request permission from the school committee. I received an interesting email from a group known as the Pearl Harbor Memorial Parade Committee and American Musical Salute. And it specifically says in the email I have in front of me that says that your JROTC unit is invited to cordially join us in Hawaii to commemorate the 50th anniversary of the Arizona Memorial to represent the junior ROTC. It appears that there's gonna be a string of activities from what I have seen online. It appears that it'll start somewheres on the 5th of December and run possibly through the 9th. It, it's saying that there was, there will be an official parade on Friday, December 7th. There's an awful lot of background to this, but basically they're celebrating the 50th anniversary of the opening of the Arizona Memorial. And I think it's an extreme honor that somebody singled us out to say, come on in and represent JROTC as a color guard in that parade. Now, I'm not gonna make any promises, there's, there's a lot to this. I know we're gonna be missing school. I'm not planning on taking a lot if given permission to do so, but basically I'm here to beg your indulgence to say, can I start researching this and see the feasibility whether we can actually accept the invitation to go or not? If you have, I have some answers to some questions that you may have right now, I may not have them all because I'm just digging on preliminary information. But I will probably take a small group and for me, a small group would be what could fit reasonably in a 14 pasture van. That would be the largest number, but I also have to comfort luggage. So it would probably be 10 to 12 max is what I would look at. It may be as low as five or six, okay? It ends up that Quabin, junior ROTC this spring, after two years of planning and working, took 45 of their cadets and went to Hawaii over spring vacation. They stayed at an military base. Captain Brenix promised me that he will share all the information. We may be, may be able to pull off another Alabama going very cheap if we could stay on base and stay at the Marine Corps facility. They say if, the Marine Corps says that if you give the kids one day to fool around with the Marines in the field and on the beaches and see the equipment, drive some tanks around, get exposed to airplanes, that they may put us up for free all week if we go, which would be an awesome benefit. Airfare right now, I can't get, I don't believe I can get a jet like I can to go to Alabama. That's a little long shot. Commercial air is running, when I looked at it just last week, about 8:50 if we bought the tickets now, round trip. So we still have a lot of work to do, but I wanted to advise you, it was great honor that we requested and it kind of continues the tradition of color guard being asked to do some really different things compared to what the boys have learned, each of the other units does, okay? And they can vouch on that. So I'll stop with that one to let you ask any questions on that particular trip.
Board members, any questions?
What days of the week is that, Commander, the 5th to 9th? Is that a Monday through Friday or?
It appears that, it says the events will be running 6 through 10. The 6th is a Thursday, December 7th is a Friday, and the 10th goes till the following Wednesday. I believe it's Tuesday or Wednesday, okay?
So how many days of school were the kids in that essentially missed them?
I would think five to six max. And it also, it also depends on the flight days and whether it's worth going out, you know, to participate in some of the events if you're only gonna be there for an hour. If I, I would rather take the kids out there and do historical visits and take them to the World War II museums down at Pearl and visit the Missouri and visit the Arizona on a separate occasion and I may have some contacts at Sync Pack Fleet to give the tours of military installations there. So, and some of the other historical things there. We won't be laying on the beach all day, I guarantee you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Any other questions? I have a couple. You're saying you're talking, you're talking, is it five, five, six students now? How about chaperones?
Well, if, if it's all males, the rule is it's, it's one chaperone per 10.
Okay.
That's the Navy's rule. It's a lot stricter than, than districts with one per 20, I think it is. If I go with a small group of boys, I could do it myself as a chaperone.
That's where I was getting.
If there are any girls, I'm definitely taking a female chaperone.
That is exactly where I was going because you was, you're talking against going, going on a base and things like that. If you're staying on a base, I just want to make sure that, that obviously our chaperones are chore checked, but anyone that'd be in close proximity to these students as well too. Instead of, as you know, you put it, running free with the Marines for a day, I'm sure it's a little more, a little more under control than that.
Oh, yeah.
Is that obviously that the, the majority of the supervisors will be chore checked.
Right. Well, that's been our policy since we've been going Alabama, we've always had chore checked people. Even if we go to a local drill meet, I will not designate somebody a chaperone unless they're chore cleared.
Which is district policy.
We've been doing that for 10 or 12 years.
Which is district policy anyways, yes.
Right. So we've been following up with that and when it used to be every two years for renewal, we used to do an annual, then it went to three years, but we do follow that. So rest assured on that, that will happen.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else?
And if there's any doubt, if there's anybody with it, I have a little bit different standards on the academics, just like Alabama, I'm gonna enforce the same rules. When we went to Alabama, we did stay on a base several times of the trip. The chaperones never had a problem there, you know, female chaperones. If it ends up that we do that again, I don't see any problem based on the same scenario. It's a repeat of what Captain Brenix did, it's a mirror of what we did in Alabama. So I don't see any issues with the Marines stopping any civilians going in there. I really don't see that. But I'm not gonna promise anything right now. I just want your blessings to proceed on. If I had to wait till September to see if we could do this, I think that's too late. So I'd rather work on it now during the summer.
Sure. I'm not gonna take a formal vote, but I guess my advice is just keep us abreast of the situation and knowing on the board, has anyone on the board raised any, any further concerns? No, we'll, we'll take it under advisement as well as, and you keep, and you keep feeding us information as it comes readily, readily available and I think it's a wonderful opportunity.
Yes, I think it's an awesome.
I think it's a well-deserved opportunity as well, too.
I think, I think it's an awesome opportunity. After all the years, we've, we've been able to pull off some exceptional trips for the Oxford kids over the years and this is just another one, but like I say, I didn't solicit this one. This one just came out of the clear blue.
If you were cut out for it.
Makes it that much more tantalizing.
Yeah, if you were cut out.
The second trip that I'm, I'm looking at, again, we discovered in the last two weeks, with the bicentennial war of 1812, there's been an awful lot of activities. Obviously, you may have seen the Sail America, Op Sail 2012 that came into, started in New Orleans, went to Baltimore, went to New York City, ended up for the 4th of July up in Boston and then in the last week, while tall ships were in Newport, they were all in New London. So there was a gaggle of tall ships all around. But I, I love the fact it's the bicentennial and I'm really like into history and I started doing some digging because I have to go to and service for the Navy at the end of the month down towards Fort Dix and I'm gonna probably shoot down to go see Fort McHenry and do some stuff like that and get some material, bring it back. When I was digging, they had some official announcements, announcements on the park, US Park Service. It's a unique arrangement with Fort McHenry. The Park Service shares the time and the development and the care of the monument with a group called Friends of Fort McHenry. Friends of Fort McHenry has gotten with the city of Baltimore and every year they have something called Defender's Days, which is basically a remembrance of when Baltimore held out and saved Baltimore from capitulating to the British or just burned Washington and stopped both the land attack and the sea attack. If that had not happened, who knows where we'd be today. What's really neat this year for the bicentennial is that group has offered to look at our group to do a color guard and they're gonna have a special ceremony on Saturday that weekend at Fort McHenry with all kinds of flag ceremonies, live artillery firing from the actual fort and then there's supposed to be a special Baltimore regional dinner provided by the group for any of the participants, but I think the neatest thing's gonna be, they're gonna full, do a full-blown reenactment of a naval bombardment of the fort with fireworks for about two hours right at the foot of the, the city of Baltimore. I've already started looking at that. We could probably fly down on a, on a Thursday night, get there Friday, get our bearings, maybe make a side trip 30 minutes away to the Naval Academy, spend Saturday at Fort McHenry, get involved with that, come back Sunday night and it looks like round trip airfare may be 54 bucks. So that's very reasonable. And we usually split, split the cost if I can't get other means of transportation rather than driving and that's actually cheaper than driving and using old gas. So if we go down, we would rent a 14 pasture van, I think that's what I would limit the group to. And again, I'm, I'm digging into that, they're interested in us coming down, there also There also is a side opportunity of doing a color guard at an Orioles game.
What's the date, date on that again?
The weekend of the 11th through 12th of September.
Okay, September, okay.
Okay, September. So, that's down the pike too. But I would like to start researching that when I'm down in Fort Dix area, and I may pop in on that agency and the, the Friends of Fort McHenry, Fort McHenry to visit them and get some real true facts when I'm down in service at the end of the month for a week. So, again, I'll keep you under advisement and it's something I would like to do for the kids. There's a lot of great opportunities here with, with all kinds of things going on. So, that's what I wanted to report.
Anything from the board on this? Again, just keep us abreast of this. Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Cadets, and thank you for sharing your stories and representing Oxford very well. Okay. And again, seeing we're out, we're out of order, Mr. Brony's here, and we'll call Mr. Brony forward, please.
Okay, thank you.
As you recall, the last meeting, two meetings were about a month ago. Mr. Brony had some extenuating circumstances in the last minute, could not be here to share his school improvement plan. So, I have invited him back in this evening to review, review that with us. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Pleasure to be here. We just completed our second year, second full year since the restructuring of the elementary schools in Oxford. During the first year following the restructuring, Clarabotten went through a transitional type of year. I looked at it as our new beginning where people, most of the people at the school were there in a new position. Some were new to the school. I myself was new. Everybody was mixed up, students, staff, custodials, people, and secretary were all new. So, it was our new beginning. Last year, the year we just completed, was a team-building year. We saw our difference, then we noticed a difference in terms of school culture, in terms of community within the school. People were much more relaxed, had an opportunity to get to know one another, get to experience my leadership, and felt more comfortable working together. Our overarching objective at the school is to provide a safe learning environment for students, an environment that's risk-free for students and staff, and one that's also fun. I'm a firm believer in fun, particularly at this, well, at this level anyways. I believe that students and staff need to enjoy coming to school. And we try to do everything possible, or our philosophy is to try to do everything possible to make sure that happens. We work very hard at providing a positive school culture at Clarabotten. Research shows there's a direct correlation between positive school culture and positive school outcomes. So, that's what we strive to achieve there. With that being said, as far as our goals for next year, three of the goals that we, we are carrying over from the previous year, and one we have established as a new goal. MCAS improvement continues to be a goal of ours, both in E L A and math. Over the last two years, we've put together a lot of new initiatives to work and achieve that goal. But the crux of our, but the crux of our initiatives and our strategies has to do in, works in three areas. One has to do with data, the other has to do with supplemental support, and the other has to do with professional development. This past year, we put together data teams that consisted of four or five people in both grades three and four. And those folks poured over hours and hours of the previous year's MCAS results. They dug deep into the questions, looked at the answers, and their goal as a team was to come up what they, to find the areas that we needed to improve as a school and put together an action plan and make that presentation, present that action plan to the staff. We were successful in achieving that goal. It took a little longer than we wanted to, but the second half of the year was focused on working toward the action plan that the committees put together. So, I applaud them for their work because, as I said, it was a lot of hours, all of which was their own time, both at school, after school, and at home. Supplemental support, we continue to provide, for this year, a couple of new initiatives we put together was providing supplemental support for students in tier two and tier three in both reading and math. From the benefit of Title I, we're able to provide some extra supplemental support for our math students and our reading students who are not reaching benchmarks. And through the hard work and efforts of our literacy teacher, we're able to provide extra supplemental support for those students in tier two and tier three for literacy. We do have, we have an approval for a .5 literacy teacher, an additional literacy, .5 literacy teacher next year, which is only going to strengthen our work in that area and is going to be greatly, greatly appreciated. As far as professional development goes, we, this year, this past year, we sent a lot of, a lot more people out for professional development than the previous year. And next year, our goal is to continue that and to send more people out. When folks go out for professional development, they, it's our, it's our policy that they come back and they share that information with staff at a staff meeting. People that went out for professional development this year have come back invigorated with new ideas and have willingly shared those ideas with their team members and with staff at staff meetings. We had the benefit of bringing in a math and writing coach during the course of the year, the second half of the year, which strengthened instructional practices, build confidence in teachers in both those areas, and also provide a positive student outcomes that I'm, that I know we'll see in MCAS results and on a daily basis as we move forward. So, we're very happy with the direction we're going with MCAS. We're going to continue to work hard next year in this area, and I'm sure that we'll come up with some new ideas and some new initiatives to further strengthen that. Just as a side note, the preliminary results for Clarabotten for E L A, MCAS scores this past year showed an improvement in both grade three and four in E L A. So, I'm pleased about that. MCAS scores have not come out. Keep looking every single day, buddy. Can't get them. Another goal that we'll be continuing this year as from last year is parental support and involvement within the school. Research shows that the more parental involvement, the more success students will experience. There's also a, a decrease when parents are involved in, in schools and in their child's education. There's a decrease in behavioral issues, attendance issues are less likely to occur, and students are less likely to drop out of high school, go on to college, and even further on. So, a lot of positive research, research having to do with parental involvement. After my first year, one of my teachers came to me and said, "Let's do a, how about we do a parent volunteer breakfast for the parents who volunteered during, during the course of this year?" And I said, "Great idea." You know, so we sent out an email to all the teachers asking them to invite the parents or send us a, an idea of who the parents were that involved. And, you know, we realized that we just, we didn't make that a priority that year. So, last year, we prioritized that. It became part of our school improvement plan, and it was an initiative that was out in the, in the forefront of the teachers all year long. At the beginning of last year, I asked all teachers to come up with two ways that they would involve parents in their school, in their classroom, which they did. Halfway through the year, we talked about how they were working toward those goals. Some of them were very successful, some were not as successful. We realigned some of those goals, and we continued, and they continued to work on getting parents involved. From my standpoint, I initiated a walk and talk with Mr. B. this past year, which was very successful. I had that, I included that in my, as an assistant principal in my previous school. And every month, I invited six parents into the school to walk around and tour the building with me. The, it was basically about an hour. We spent about 15, 20 minutes talking, doing a question and answer session in the beginning, followed by about 30 minutes of walking through the building. During those walks, we went into a half a dozen classrooms, spent about five minutes or so in each classroom. Parents were free to ask questions. Teachers told, talked to the parents about what, what they were doing at, at that particular time. And then at the end, we sat down and we talked about, you know, what we saw, and I answered any further questions. Highly successful. The first couple of months, I had over 40 parents send in requests to join, you know, to join me on the walk, and I will continue to do that next year. We also did monthly family nights during the course of the year. We did a variety of things. We did math night, we did a literacy night, we did movie night, and so on and so forth. I learned a long time ago that you need to embrace parents and look at parents as an asset, and I carry that with me and that philosophy with me every day. And I try to impose that philosophy within our school. And I think we've been working very hard and been very successful this past year on that. So, I look forward to another positive year. I believe that our school should be transparent. We, I want parents to be in there so that we can celebrate all the great things that the teachers are doing, and the parents can really see and appreciate, you know, the hard work that they do each and every day. Another one of our goals that we're continuing this year is school culture, and I alluded to that a few minutes ago. But again, there's a lot of research out there that says there's a direct correlation between a positive school culture and student success. So, we, we organized the committee last year, and will continue to do it again this year, that it's called a School Culture Committee. And we have about 10 to 12 people, all different types of staff, not only teachers but secretaries. Anyone who wants to join that committee can be on that committee. And we sit around a table once every other week, and we talk about ways that we can improve school culture. We plan events, we plan activities that are designed to build a positive, build a positive culture within the school. They're curriculum-based activities, they're fun, and a lot of them we do together as a whole school. The teachers have embraced this idea, and the kids really love it. A lot of times, we, what we do sometimes too is we, we take kids and we mix them all up, and we put them in different classrooms with different teachers to maybe do a math activity or a, or a E L A activity or a science activity or whatever. We also do activities and we plan events around themes that are going on during the course of the year, and also different celebrations and different holidays, so. Again, it's a lot of fun. We encourage, you know, different types of dress. Kids love getting off the bus and seeing me dressed up in different costumes that have to do with the different activities that we're doing. We encourage parent, teachers to dress up and kids as well. So, again, it has to do with fun. Our next goal has to do, and our final goal has to do with the John Collins Writing Program. As you know, that's a new initiative that the district took on this year. We have embraced it within our school. All the teachers were trained and had a workshop prior to the school year on the John Collins program. About midway through the year, I met with all the teachers for different reasons, one of, one of which was to discuss John Collins. And through that, through those conversations, I found out the teachers really weren't, didn't have that real comfort level in terms of what they were doing with John Collins. So, I went to Joanna Daley, and I talked to her about maybe getting some extra support and getting some extra professional development into the school. She talked to Alan and Richard, and they embraced that idea. We brought in a John Collins coach for a couple of weeks, and he came into the building, and he worked with the teachers, went into their classrooms, worked with them, modeled lessons, observed them doing lessons, and then had follow-up productive conversations about what was going on in the classroom and answered any questions for them. Teachers loved it. They, they really, there was really a confidence boost from across the board with all teachers. And it's my understanding that we're going to bring this person back, this coach again next year for further support. So, I applaud, you know, the administration, higher administration as well as the school committee for allowing this to happen. Professional development is very important in, in our business. We need to be on the cutting edge of what's happening in the industry, and that means continually going and being, addressing ways that we can improve. So, it's my understanding that we'll be able to do a lot more of that next year as well. So, those are our goals for the year. I do want to say that I'm honored to be the principal at that school. We have a great staff. People are dedicated, and they're committed to working hard every day for the success of our students. So, I know it doesn't always reflect in the scores, but I do believe over the course of the next couple of years, we're working hard toward heading in the right direction to, so that we'll see that, or be able to measure that success, so.
Thank you. Board members.
Just one comment. So, the, the goals for this year are, are the same as last year.
Three of which are, yes.
Yeah, I think the last one, the John Collins.
Correct.
Would be the additional goal. But to me, it looks like it's, you know, we're looking for the same percentages.
I'm sorry?
We're looking, you're looking for the same percentages, you know, 70% of the grade third, you know, third grade students.
Correct.
Passing at a certain level, which was the same as last year. So, what makes us think that we're going to make it there this year? We didn't make it last year. What, how are we?
Well, I think the.
I don't know if I'm asking that question right. You, you following what I'm saying?
Well, I certainly could have put 80 or 90% down there, but I wanted to be realistic. I wanted them to be attainable and, and also achievable. But I do think that some of the programs that we have in place need a little time to take effect and to be able to see the result of those initiatives. As I also alluded to in the beginning, the, the first year was a transitional year. People are feeling more comfortable in what they're doing, there's more confidence, we're getting more professional development, we're coming together as a school. All those working together along with the initiatives that we're putting forward, I think are going to enable us to see a positive result. I think next year, hopefully, I'll be able to state that claim in at a higher percentage. But again, I, I, I wanted to be realistic. We did not achieve.
And I appreciate that.
We did not, we did not achieve that this year. We did not achieve, as far as what I saw from the preliminary results, we did not achieve that. But we, we, we are showing positive results.
Are the arrows going up?
I'm sorry?
The arrows going up. We're, we're going up.
Yes, yes.
We're improving, we're making improvements.
As far as I'm concerned, yes. You know, a small gain is still a gain. It's not, it's not a negative.
And about how many parents do you have then on a weekly basis that come in to volunteer? Would you, that might be a hard question.
I mean, it's, it's not only, you know, parents coming in to volunteer, but it's also parents that are coming in for a variety of different reasons. We have, we have the grade levels put together, some programs this year where they work together as a grade or within their pod within the grade level. They did projects, they had culminating activities, and the culminating activity, they invited parents in for. We have one teacher, Mrs. Gilligan, who has a monthly success day where she invites all the parents in her classroom to come in, and the kids share their successes for the course of, over the course of that period of time, three weeks or four weeks. We try to invite parents into a lot of the events that we have taking place during the course of the year. We, we had, the, we put together a Memorial Day program over the last couple of years. This past Memorial Day, we invited parents in for that. We did a community, we did a Walk to School Day to celebrate National Walk to School Day. We invited parents to participate in that. We did a big MCAS rally to kick off MCAS, the MCAS testing. We invited parents to come in for that. Parents, I mean, I, 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 I don't know. I, I wouldn't want to be inaccurate, but I'd like to say there are a lot. I, I think more in terms of during the course of the week, we have a lot of parents in there. So, I mean, I, I love seeing parents in the building, whether they're, you know, in there to volunteer or whether they're in there to experience and, and see the results of their child's work. It's still, you know, opening up the doors for people coming in, as I said. I mean, you know, I want to, I want us to be transparent, and I want parents to feel comfortable and welcome to be in there.
Let's go, Karen.
Did all the teachers take part in the Professional Development Day for the Collins program?
At the beginning of the year, yes. Yep.
Was that their option or was that mandatory?
They took it. It was encouraged.
And how will this affect the kids? Like, you know, is this going to go from like learning everyday math to math that we grew up with? Is it going to be a total different experience for the kids from, with the Collins program?
Collins is a writing program, the everyday math, but they, they will be writing across the curriculum. So, the, the beauty of the Collins Writing Program is that we, we're encouraging writing in all disciplines, but I'm, maybe I'm not understanding it.
No, I mean, like, you know, it'd be like going from everyday math to next year, we're not doing everyday math. We're learning math like we did when we were growing up. I call it normal math. So, will this be difficult for the children to convert over to this program?
The John Collins?
Mm-hmm.
I don't believe so. I, I believe it's like any new initiative, it's going to take a little time. But the beauty of this is we're doing it K through 12, so that when the, when they go to the next grade level, they'll already be exposed to the basics and have a good understanding of how the program works.
Thank you.
I worked with this as a third grade teacher, the John Collins program, and it's, it's a wonderful program.
I've heard only good things about it myself.
Anyone else? Mr. Brony, in your, in your packet, you didn't list your committee members. Who's on the, who's on the school improvement committee?
Well, I had a committee put together at the beginning of the year, and then the I had a committee put together at the beginning of the year, and then the parents that I had volunteered, that volunteered for that committee weren't able to fulfill that commitment. I tried to recruit some parents unsuccessfully, and unfortunately, things got busy at the school, and one thing led to another, and we never ended up putting the committee together. These initiatives that you have here, that I have from last year, as I said, they're on the forefront of the, of the teachers every day. They're posted on the bulletin board as the teachers walk by every morning. We discuss these initiatives in staff meetings, so it's, it's not an independent type of a, a committee. In a way, we have embraced, I embraced the whole school this past year. I'm going to take some new steps in this coming year to be a little bit more aggressive in terms of putting a committee together, and be a little bit more successful with that.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, we have, we have already accept, we have already voted to accept that, so thank you for coming in for that. And I think Mrs. Raveli had brought up before, meaning if you want to give you the floor again and talk about updates to this, or do you want to? Or I can handle it for you?
Oh, sure, just, I think I had mentioned it when we did all of the reviews. And just the suggestion, it's just, it would be nice to hear from principals throughout the year, because we find out, I mean, last year, we had this nice presentation about, you know, these are our goals, and this is how we're going to meet our goals. And then all year, I never heard, well, are we meeting them? What else do we need to meet them? If we are meeting them, I'd like to know, because that's always nice to know. And so I think updates periodically, and it doesn't have to, I would strongly suggest that it not be all the principals. You know how much I don't like that. You know, even if, you know, I think I had mentioned, somebody comes in October, maybe Mr. Barone comes in October, and maybe Mr. Wells comes in, in November, and-
Once a month.
On and on, and once a month, we have-
On a rotating basis between the four schools.
Right, and then maybe we see you a couple of times a year to talk about, okay, this is what we have, these are our goals. You know, MCAS scores will be out the next time, you know, and we won't be waiting a whole year to say, we didn't meet the goals. We really tried hard, the arrow's still going up, but we still haven't met our goals. So that we can say, it's an opportunity for you two to ask for, you know, what else do you need to get the job done? And I think updating is, is good practice. I haven't heard of an update on any of the plans that we went over last year. So that kind of was a big hole for me.
I think that, I think it's a wonderful idea, work out a schedule over the course of a school year, maybe once a month. And that's a maximum, you may be here one time, maybe twice, maybe some people make them in twice.
Right.
You know, I certainly would embrace that. I don't have a problem with that. I think, you know, it's only going to strengthen the relationship that we have here. And then it gives you a better idea. I've always, you know, embraced and encouraged committee members to come into the school, to, you know, tour the building with me and see what's going on, spend some time. So I certainly, you know, would be in favor of something like that.
You know, it'd be forever, for all the administrators, for all the schools.
Yes, no, I understand, yes, absolutely.
Wonderful.
Yes, we're not picking on you.
You just came after the fact, and we were talking about that.
Hear all that, guys?
Okay, very good.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Barone? Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Barone.
Have a great summer.
Thank you.
You too. Let's try and get back on some sort of a schedule now. Go back up, jump up to the top, and under Routine Matters, we have approval of minutes for May twenty-first, June eleventh, and June twenty-fifth. Those went out in this packet, and go. And I can take them singly, or as a whole unit? Any problems with the minutes?
I, Mr. Chairman, I had problems with May twenty-first.
May twenty-first, okay.
I feel that there was a manipulation of the occurrences at the meeting. And I don't consider manipulation by the recorder or the transcriber a fair record, because people who saw it on television saw something differently than was reported. I don't know that a lot of people watch the school news on television, but for those who catch it at odd times. And in fact, the scroll shows Mrs. Ennis as being the chair of the committee.
Will you update that for us? Okay.
And I think that should be changed, to show the, the names of the people who are on the committee now, and the people who are holding those positions. I don't know that we can force someone to transcribe what they see on the recorded scene, but I would hope that there will be a truthful record.
Okay, why don't we hold this one, and then, and then, and then we can talk, talk about that one. Yes, Ms. Gold, you go ahead.
This was the reason why we held this, these minutes in the first place.
May twenty-first.
May twenty-first.
And they didn't change.
So what was it specifically that?
Mrs. Walker's misquoted in this.
And the sequence is wrong.
The sequence is wrong through.
It started there and came this way, so that Brenda spoke last.
Right.
But the way it's in the record, Brenda spoke first.
Exactly. I, I, I follow, yeah, I follow exactly what she's saying, just in terms of the order that I want through. We still, do we still have the tape?
How would we change this, because I can then resubmit, because there's no sense of continuing to present the same minute?
Right, right, I thought that would be changed.
So, what is it that?
I believe, Mrs. Walker, you're talking about under?
Number five?
Number five.
Okay, so would it be? I'm talking, I'm turning my-
No, go right ahead, go right ahead.
Would it be then fine if I, because I'm the recorder for this evening, if I sat with Mrs. Walker and we went over, or should we do that now? And just go through it so that we can approve these minutes, because they've been here now since, you know, May. It's, it's now the, this is our last meeting in July, isn't it?
Yes, it will be.
Yes, so.
We, we can hold, we can hold this one.
No, why don't, can we just go over and make the corrections now?
If, if, is it a quick correction, Ms. Walker?
Is it a quick corrections?
I misquoted as well.
Well.
Okay.
I have penciled comments on here, but whether or not you want to?
Well, there's still, if we make corrections and changes, my understanding is if we make corrections and changes to the meeting minutes, we all have to agree to them. So, should we not make those corrections now, and then they can be presented again at the next meeting?
Unfortunately, I think we want to present them again at the next meeting. Because Ms. Gold should say she has something else those two, so. I think what before, at some point this week, I would ask committee members to mark up your copy and to submit that to Mrs. Raveli on where, on where the things occur, what we're missing in the order of minutes. Okay, then secondly, Alan, do we still have the tape of the meeting?
It should be available to us.
And so, the recording secretary that evening was Mrs. Raveli, and she can, no, it wasn't, it was Darcy. No, it's Darcy, okay.
I remember this thing.
Thank you, that was the recording secretary. And we can forward what, what we think is missing to Melissa, and she can do the minutes from the tape.
I would think so.
Yes, it'd be easy. So, forward what you see, and then send it to Melissa.
So then, okay. So we'll submit our corrections for the twenty-first, that's for the twenty-first?
That's for the twenty-first.
Okay.
Okay. So that's on continuous hold. Okay, secondly, the minutes of June eleventh and June twenty-fifth.
Mr. Chairman, I would request that D, which says Recommended Action, Routine Matters, in the second line, it said, "Mrs. Ennis then read a statement attached," is in parentheses. They were not attached to my set of minutes. I don't know if anyone else got them.
Okay, and this was, I'm sorry, from what date, Mrs. Walker? From June eleventh?
Eleventh.
Yes, and was?
And if I may?
Yes.
I did submit the attached.
And I also attached it.
It just is not here, but it was submitted. So maybe if, if all members received a copy of that attachment, would that be enough to eventually approve these? Again, we'll have to hold these probably.
We'll hold these as well too, yes.
But would that be enough, I guess, if we had the attachment?
One more, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
One more request I would make is that the pages be numbered in sequence. This is a standard practice in material.
Page one, two.
In order to refer to one to the other, that, that they be numbered, so you can get the sequence straight. And my comment after Mrs. Raveli's comment was omitted completely. And my feeling is that there is an opportunity for department heads and managers to hear about each other's line of work, and if they don't sit in the same room to hear it, I doubt that they're going to be watching it on television.
And this was, was this under letter F?
Yes.
Under F, so, so that, that was your, that was the, okay.
Top of page five, if it were numbered.
One, two, three, yes, okay. There's nothing this evening. You had your comment about that, yes, you did, I remember that. Correct?
Thank you.
Thank you. And that'll be held. And we'll try the twenty-fifth. Everyone else set for the twenty-fifth, for June twenty-fifth minutes? Yes, no, if there's no problems, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of June twenty-fifth, two thousand and twelve.
Motion to accept minutes of meeting June twenty-fifth, two thousand and twelve?
Okay.
Second.
Moving to second, discussion. To Mrs. Walker, I'm just going to, is this the for, is this the format that you would like to see, except is this, that the page numbers go on this?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I just want to, want to be clear that we have one that works. So, if we insert page numbers, then we can go from there. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose abstentions, minutes are approved, four in the affirmative, and one absent to see. Okay, and Ms. Gold, should you please send that to Mr. Raveli for her signature?
Oh, I signed it. They, they give me copies.
Oh, you have copies, okay, I think that might be the original. Okay, so we have a little more working minutes. In our packets this week, we received a school physician contract, and I'll turn the floor to Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Coonan. As customary, each year we need to approve a school physician for the district, and we have had success using the UMS Memorial Medical Group and South County Pediatrics under the direction of Dr. Angela Beeler. And I just would ask for the committee's approval to once again have them as the physicians of record to support our health care in, within the district.
Okay, and if I'm reading this, Superintendent, the R cost is seven thousand five hundred dollars? For this, on the last page?
Correct.
Correct. And three, one star, that's okay, so. And they have been the providing physician, this agreement has been standing for the last few years?
I believe three, if not four.
Last three or four years, and been, and everything has worked from, for both parties?
Yes.
So it's worth continuing?
And the price has not changed.
And the price has not changed, it's a matter of how, how care is going now.
Very unique.
Very rare.
Been heard of.
Very good. Okay, at that, this point, anything else? Entertain a motion to instruct the superintendent to sign this agreement?
Slow move.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Moving to second, in discussion. Being none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Record show, form, affirmative, and zero against, zero, and one absent. Next item in business is discussion of FY thirteen budget, and I don't know who wants to start, Mr. Mathau or Mr. Himmelberger?
Thank you very much. As the committee is aware, one of the things that we need to do is set the budget controls for, for the upcoming fiscal year. Historically, the budget controls have been broken out by function code, as you see on my memo, and as you saw in the last couple of monthly financial updates. That approach is fine, there are no issues with that. A second approach would be to show the school budget as other town departments do, simply broken down by salaries and expenses. That method is a little more straightforward, and I think easier for the public to understand. Regardless of the budget control method that the committee chooses, the monthly reports will not change. However, if we decide to, to do salaries and expenses as the control, I'll simply add a couple of lines to my normal report, which breaks out each function code, showing salaries and expenses, the budget, the year-to-date incurred, and projected available balance. So, it's up to the committee. Again, the past method, there had been no issues with it. I throw forward a, a different look at it, simply for ease of use, because two of the new members are familiar with it from their days on the Board of Selectmen. It mirrors how other town departments do it, but there's no dying crisis to change over to, from one method to the other. It's simply an opportunity.
Questions? I have a couple for you, Mr. Mathau. You're still, you're still under requirement of DESE to keep the codes, correct?
That's correct.
So, you're actually adding more lines to your budget in doing so?
More lines in terms of?
More lines of, well, you're going to have a budget and salaries by division? We're not going to see just, oh, salaries, you have twelve, we have almost thirteen million, and expenses almost two million?
No, the monthly reporting to the committee will still be by function code.
Thank you.
That, that will not change.
Okay. Rob, all by function code, and then? Your, yeah, go ahead, just to ask my question.
Through the chair, I believe Mr. Matthew simply wanted to offer an additional clearer summation of where the budget is at any point in time. It wouldn't change, the function codes are the function codes, fifty-eight or fifty-nine of them, that we are required by, by audit as well as practice to report by, but throwing an additional, two lines of salary and expenditures that would provide an additional summation that might be easier for folks at home, and certainly provide an additional level of reporting.
For example, we're still going to be able to see building technology is at twenty-three thousand eight hundred dollars, and where they stand.
That's correct.
That's, thank you. So, I think Mrs. Ennis' question, she's not, she's not here, but last week she talked about she likes to read all, all the little numbers. So all the little numbers and lines are still going to be there?
That will not change one of that.
Thank you. That's, I think that's important, that the openness where the budget dollars are so tight, and really to scrutinize every penny where it's spent out there, and taxpayers want to see that too, is that it doesn't look like that you're just getting this lump sum as, at town meeting, we get our own some money, and then, you know, schools go do with it, and it's voted as one, one-line item. But then it's broken down our end, so the checks and balances still there. That town meeting gives us our money, and then we use it as this committee assists budget for us. Okay, that works for me. Questions? Anyone else? No? Okay, being so, I would entertain a motion to, to accept the budget reporting methods as recommended by Mr. Mathau, with, including the salaries and expenses lines as part of FY thirteen operating budget.
So move. Second.
Moving to second, discussion. And then, all, please say, please say aye.
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 Aye. Record show, form affirmative, and one absent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Correspondents, everything right down here, from subcommittees and study groups, and I have subcommittees. It took me a little while, but I did work with the subcommittees, and I'll read them tonight, and then we can send, I can send out an email, things like that. And it was interesting putting these together, and going through our policy book. We do have subcommittees. We do have subcommittees, then we do have special committees. For example, Mrs. Raveli sits on the curriculum committee, which is kind of an ad hoc to that. Mrs. Ennis is on the bullying task committee. And also as part of, and I really wanna get into, looking through this book, is as listed as we have five subcommittees or groups of the school committee. And I really, and I couldn't find it in here where, how they were, how they addressed, how they went. So I said, okay, we'll go through, and we'll point, and it's something that, when we, when we look at policy, that we're gonna look at these. So, um, I guess I'll just read the names. On the building and maintenance, I have, uh, Mrs. Brenda Ennis and Mrs. Susan Raveli. On the crisis insecurity, Mrs. Sarah Gosha and Mrs. Alice Walker. On nego, on negotiations, will be Mrs. Brenda Ennis and myself, Mr. Daniel Coonan. Policy review will be Mrs. Sarah Gosha and myself, Mr. Daniel Coonan. And the wellness will be Mrs. Alice Walker and Mrs. Susan Raveli. So those as the five subcommittees as, I don't know if we've even authorized them, but there has been longstanding committees that have the school commit, that has been under the school committee. And then there's also the special committees, like, uh, we'll be hearing about one another one tonight coming up, but, uh, the curriculum committee is through Raveli, and the bullying committee, which is more a committee, subcommittee slash task force, and more people involved in that. So, um, those were our committees, and different things come up, and of course, times a year that we may be referring to those committees for those. All right, um, so that could be, but Zach, you're up.
All righty. So, uh, okay, uh, not much really happens with the students and the schools during the summer, but for student council, I have one thing. Um, Erin Sullivan went to the MASCE Summer Conference for Student Council, so that's the statewide conference where delegates from each school go and learn all about, you know, leadership and all this stuff. It's her second year, and seeing as she's an incoming junior for her senior year, she'll be the first one from our school to go for three years, since, I think, Nina Trong. So that's pretty exciting. And now we're just preparing for Pirate's Voyage, which is the eighth grade orientation. And that is gonna be in like the third week of August, we think? So, yeah, that's all.
Great, thanks. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have, uh, a couple of brief items. Uh, one is the middle school building project. I, I know most of us were getting antsy as to when we might see some activity, and, um, um, finally this weekend, there was activity. Um, and so the, uh, the contractor, SOM, has five weeks to, to do the project. Um, our owner's project manager and architect are working closely with them to make sure that they do, um, substantially complete the project in time, and the contractor assures us that he will. So, um, at least now, to see activity is refreshing. As everyone knows, the, the educator evaluation Massachusetts Model System um, is in its first year of implementation. Um, and this was something that derived from Race to the Top, which had its genesis back in February of two thousand nine as part of the ERA, American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of two thousand nine. And, um, around Race to the Top was a chance for states to compete for additional funding, and, um, I think it was somewhere in excess of five billion dollars was the total. Massachusetts competed and did, um, qualify for two hundred and fifty million dollars. Part of that caveat was to improve the educator evaluations along with the fact that, um, we, Massachusetts did qualify for a waiver for No Child Left Behind, which is the current law governing public education that has, uh, waned for the last five or six years in Washington. So, um, I am happy to report that Oxford is one of only twenty-five districts that has the educator evaluation model language negotiated and approved by, uh, the school committee and the, um, the Oxford Education Association. And, um, districts that are Race to the Top districts, of which there's a slightly over two hundred, I believe, have to have this in place for the fall. So we are slightly ahead of the curve, um, and are looking forward to, um, implementing this. Um, again, it requires all educators, superintendents, principals, professional staff to, um, be accountable. And I think that the ultimate goal is to have our students, when they graduate, to be ready, um, for the twenty-first century. And I, I believe that, um, as Mr. Bruni, um, stated, you know, transparency and accountability is key. So, um, it is nice to report that we are one of only twenty-five districts that has that hard work done in implementing that evaluation system. Um, I, I do agree with Mrs. Raveli that the updates certainly would be, um, I think warranted throughout the year because it, it gives the committee a much better barometer, um, both in terms of where we are and then what else might be needed. So I, I believe that that is something that certainly the, um, the principals and administrators would embrace. And to, to alleviate some of our recording concerns, we do have, uh, several applicants, um, that we are interviewing this week and with the expectation that one, the most qualified, dedicated, and efficient candidate will emerge and be present on August the thirteenth and ushering in a new era of streamlined, uh, but very effective, um, minutes to be approved. So I know that Mrs. Raveli says that's good news, and we look forward to that. So that person will be in place for the August thirteenth meeting, whoever he or she is.
Mm-hmm.
And that's my report.
Mr. Mathau?
Uh, nothing more this evening.
Okay. Uh, school committee members?
I'd like to, um, I went to the tri-symptecennial, which was, uh, was it Sunday? And I, uh, took part, the, uh, PAC one forty-seven invited all the school committee members and selectmen to take part in the dunk tank. And I graciously accepted the invitation to do the dunk tank. Um, I probably picked the wrong hour, being the fact that the, um, All-Star game had just gotten out. So I was a good sport, I stayed in the tank probably about an hour, I had a great time, they earned some money. Um, and, um, I was regretting I didn't go at two o'clock when it was a little warmer. But, uh, it was for a good cause, and I enjoyed the, the day and the celebrations. Um, I also went down to the leadership, um, ceremony down in Newport and went over to Commander Maisley's, um, home. And it was a very impressive afternoon with the cadets and the parents. I had a nice afternoon and day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Raveli? Um, just a reminder, it's, it's still on my list of things. If the punch list is done yet for the, the new building that, that we're all into, um, I still don't see signage. And I don't know if there's an update on that.
The update is that Mr. Donay is still working with the, um, the contractors, uh, the contractor. Um, and as you can see, um, we have asked the DPW, and they have graciously helped to start some of the exterior, um, and we will bill that back to the contractor. So, um, I would, I would like to, to be optimistic and say we'll have signage up for the new school year. And that's what we'll shoot for.
That will be wonderful.
That will be a goal.
That would be wonderful. Nothing else.
Very good. Mrs. Walker?
I was very, um, impressed with the marvelous turnout of the townspeople to enjoy the weather and the goings-on that were part of the parade. A lot of organizations worked very hard to do what they did. It was, it was, I'm waiting to see it on the local channel because being in the parade, you don't see whatever else is going on. But it was, it was, uh, it was a great commitment that the committee made, and a lot of organizations have supported it wholeheartedly from what I could see. And, um, the gathering on our little Jocelyn Park was quite impressive. I, I, uh, really, really got the town's spirit again after so many years of having missed Founder's Day. But, uh, and I'm happy to serve a community that cares about itself and its own history. It, it's, it is a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, and right, and that parade was full of history. That, you know, really, you know, seeing Mrs. Walker, uh, on the floor, Mrs. Olney. Um, I had the pleasure, uh, to walk towards the beginning of the parade. Uh, my kids walked towards the tail end, the churches, the organizations that really came out and just supported Oxford. It was incredible, including, um, our own DPW. Um, and I know this is not a school note, but, um, my aunt held, or the old, the old Universalist Church, she has a bell. And we've, we, we gave that, that bell to the town, and, um, Stevie, Stevie Esposito made it, made it a point to call and say, Dan, we'd like to get that bell on the parade, can we put it in the parade? And they made an incredible float, just showing just, you know, the history that's in this town. And then showing the time capsule, uh, with those high school students being involved in that. And so many kids, it was, it was a great day for everyone, young and old, and both at heart too. It was a wonderful time, thank you for bringing that up. And then that's all I have, and Mr. Himmelberger, one thing?
I do have one more, and, um, not to minimize it, but I wanted to make sure that the committee, uh, was aware that, um, Karen Nunivon resigned as our special ed director. And so the rules of the road from the policy manual are that we need to put together a search committee. Um, and, uh, I wanted to publicly thank, uh, Dr. Karen Nunivon for stepping in at the last minute last year to, to get us through this year. Um, and so we are going to, um, do a search. The timing is not perfect, but there are many candidates. It's interesting that Webster just did a search, Grafton is starting the process now. Um, many other districts in the area are going to have to do it soon. So in that regard, maybe our timing is okay. So, um, I will be putting together the search committee as per the, um, school committee policy, and, uh, we will get to work on this ASAP.
ASAP, me, you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I didn't skip it, did I, Rich? You're all, you're all set, all right? Okay, I thought I was making sure, okay. All right, uh, and again, future meeting dates being August the thirteenth and August the twenty-seventh. At this point, I'll, uh, open the floor, close the floor, executive session. All set? Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Moving to second, no further business, call for the vote.
Yes, yes.
And yes, we are adjourned. Have a good night, have a good evening.